I was like, I'll make her day.
Oh.
I'll bring you a basket. Tomorrow.
Hi, Carl. Especially else, uh, are you gonna hear the interview?
Yes. Wendy Phillips.
Wendy.
Are you Ryan?
I'm Ryan.
Nice to meet you.
How are you else?
This is my husband, James.
Hi, James. All right, wait just a few more minutes. There's three more people.
On the speaker.
From top.
Lizzie. Lizzie.
Did you work today?
Oh, yeah, Matt and.
Oh, Nathan.
Nathan, yeah.
So the roads are kind of, that's the problem, the roads are bad. Might take people a few minutes.
Do you think you at least checked the email and made sure?
I just checked the email before I came in, there's been nothing.
So were you a road cloud over there?
I haven't heard anybody.
What?
Any evidence?
Oh, oh, shoot. I have to, hold on, how do I do it this way?
There, your feet, your people now.
Okay, you got them.
They're ready.
Hello.
Hi.
Are you one of the interviewees?
Yeah, is that okay? Should I be somewhere else? No, we're perfect.
Your name, please?
Lizzie Fuqun.
Lizzie, nice to meet you.
Thank you, too.
Thank you. So we'll get to the interviewers in just a minute.
Right on.
Go through a couple of procedures next here.
Yeah, Nathan and Matthew.
Okay, here's where I'm gonna need help. I want this to be there. I don't know why this person's showing up.
If you put on speaker. When you call the review.
He's listening, right?
Yeah, if you go to the view at Fox again. Also, no one's entering the waiting room. Just go on speaker view. And then can you double click on the city?
Yeah, on the picture. There you go.
Thank you, Laurie. I don't really want to see this.
What's the password for Wi-Fi here?
Spring.
Capital S, yeah, S. Spring two zero one eight.
Thank you.
All together.
Okay, ready? Maybe Matthew and Nathan will join us.
Yep.
All right.
Let's go.
So, um, we'll call to order the meeting and then take a roll call. Jim Richards. Uh, Ryan and I course.
Dana Bergner. Lori Novak.
You have a agenda. The, uh, one item for interviews, so I'll entertain a motion for the agenda. Second, second. Any comments? Say done, all those in favor, say probably saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the group. Okay, this evening, I have, uh, welcome the interviewees that are here with us tonight. Uh, Nathan and Matthew hopefully will still walk in. But before that, I just have, uh, first of all, I'd like to welcome Lizzie, Wendy, and Carl who are here tonight for the interview. Start that here, but first of all, I'd just like to have a, take a brief comment. At the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one Special Council Meeting, a discussion centered around how the council should proceed with filling the vacant council seat. City Attorney shared different options for the council to consider. He indicated there was no Minnesota statute or laws that require a specific process to be used to fill a vacancy. The coun- council could have appointed a season to, appointed person to fill the vacancy. We could also decide to request citizens to apply for the posting via an application and interview selection process by the council. After the discussion, unanimous consensus of the four council members was to proceed with soliciting applicants from the community to submit an application. The application would be generated by city staff to post on the city website and Facebook page. The consensus was to accept applications from February twenty-third through March eighth. There was no motion or vote for this process of soliciting applications. The council was initiating a process to conduct interviews. Due to having city staff workload on following, the following day, March February twenty-third, it was not posted until Wednesday, February twenty-fourth at nine fifty-three a.m. The city staff and I chose to push the arbitrary end date out to March ninth, which was the same number of days had it been posted the day before, February twenty-third. There was no intent by city staff or me to go against the council's process and date setting. We just wanted to remain, we wanted to maintain the same number of days to receive applications and not short anyone on time. Posting on the city Facebook, city website, and the application all said the end date was March ninth to the general public. It was one hundred percent clear to the public regarding the end date for response. If we would have used the March eighth end date, the same people would have submitted their names, in my opinion, but they chose to wait until March ninth, which was the deadline per the information shown to them. Some residents are upset because we did not appoint someone and instead chose to conduct interviews. It's okay to be upset with the council's decisions, but the rudeness to our city clerk and emails and phone calls to home at night was very disrespectful of privacy and very unfortunate. The council is not corrupt, as many have indicated in phone calls and emails. We chose to be on the council and the will of the people put us here to serve all the residents of OrnoCo. With that, let's proceed with the interviewees that are here tonight. So what we will do is we'll allow, uh, eight minutes. Excuse me, fifteen minutes. That did sound very much like it. So there's, um, there were two questions that you had time to submit your responses to, and we'd like to hear from you. And then we have, um, a series of four questions that was emailed out to you, uh, Friday night, Saturday morning, to give some additional thought to answering some of those questions as well. So we would like to start alphabetically with Nathan Geisinger, but I don't see him. Matthew Copeland is not here yet. And that would be, uh, Carl Kraus would be the next person. So Carl, if you want to come forward and see the podium and just share with us, um, your responses to those questions.
Just think about questions. The only question, the news I got was the four. Was there more?
I emailed you a form Saturday morning to CJautosales.com.
I didn't get no question here. And I got your deal, uh, but I'll answer the questions, that is, that's no problem, but I made copies because it's hard to hear with the masks at times.
And I'd ask, when we, when we ask questions, if we take each of the applicants and have them answer one of the questions first, so we can take one, if Carl wants to answer it first.
That's fine.
And the next one. So they all get a chance to answer it first.
Yeah, Carl, these are the questions, so, uh, these are the questions that were sent out.
Oh, okay, it gets horrible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think he was referring to the first two that you answered on the original application.
Oh, okay.
So there's a total of six that he answered, yeah.
Okay. Question. Did you have any more, Jim, or?
No.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Question number one. It asks, uh, have you previously served on any governing boards of any type, businesses, government, nonprofit organization, churches, or leaders of any organization? And it was on the OrnoCo Gold Rush Board, when it was divided from when the foxes were gonna try and take Gold Rush, the Rochester. They had it on the south side of the bridge, and it ended up to be a court battle. And, uh, Sarah Kraus, which would have been my sister-in-law, and Merle, which has passed on, myself, Dennis, well, I guess I still have to explain it because I got a whole back page there telling the history of Gold Rush from day one. I was a, day one of Gold Rush, I was working for Earl Berg. I worked in the store and I worked on at his boat launch at White Bridge. And I was on the OrnoCo City Council. The Grace Lutheran Church Council passed and present president. I was on the founding member of the OrnoCo Lions, the first Lion Club. Because, uh, old one dissolved and a new one started, and I don't know who found that. And I was a past OrnoCo Lion president. I was on the OrnoCo Fire Department, four H leader. I belonged to the OrnoCo Sportsman Club, I was past resident. I helped start the club. Of merged with Pine Island Club, which in return merged together and we became White Pine Sportsman Club. And I'm a lifetime member. And that's basically what I got.
Any questions?
How long? How long were you, um, on each of these things? How long were, I guess, and then?
The Gold Rush.
How long ago? So how many years and how long ago?
Don't really know when Gold Rush. The year the bridge got redact was when, uh, it was getting dissolved and the foxes wanted, said it was a private entity, it wasn't a city function. And Merle, Seth Merle was mayor at the time. Merle and Sarah, myself and Dennis Noel and, uh, Jim McKernan.
How, how many years were you on all of these?
Four, four, four years. OrnoCo City Council, four, the Grace Lutheran Church. I been on for the last six years, I was a president three years ago, and I got re-elected president here two months ago. I was the founder of OrnoCo Lions Club. I would say it was the late seventies, early eighties, I was on there for about six years and then I moved to a farm up by Pine Island, so I was off it. And, uh, the fire department, basically three years because I moved out of town. And at that time, you can't live out of the city limits to be on the club. And four H later, I suppose about ten years. And the Sportsman Club, I'm a lifetime member. Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
So do you take one question each or go through all four at once?
I thought we built through all of them.
Yeah, I, I would like us to just do one, right? You know, give you everyone a chance to start on a question.
Oh, you're saying one candidate, oh, I get it.
Right, so number, so now let's, I would say, let's get another candidate up. Go through number one, go through that, go through it like that. Because then someone else gets a chance to start with number two.
Okay.
So.
Lizzie, sorry, just a second.
So Jim, just so I'm clear, so is each person gonna answer the questions, though?
Yeah. I think so.
Okay.
All right, Lizzie, please. Hi.
I'm glad you turned the camera around because I wasn't prepared for that camera angle. Especially with my. Thanks for making the time today, I'm Lizzie Fuqun, um, and it's great to have a chance to put faces to names, um, so thank you. Um, in terms of governing positions that I've held in the past, if I work backwards, I got my start in my interest in politics when I was much younger, um, so probably, uh, started in high school. I served as a page in the Minnesota House of Representatives when I was, uh, probably about sixteen or seventeen, I'm guessing. And that gave me an appreciation for the diplomatic process. Um, since then, I've served for various nonprofits in different capacities. Uh, my family grew up breeding and raising and showing Bernese Mountain Dogs. And I'm an active member of a couple of nonprofits as a result. There's a Minnesota, or excuse me, the St. Croix Valley Kennel Club, and I've served in a volunteer capacity for them. I have, um, served for the North Star Working Group Association, and so the work there usually entails putting on dog shows, educating the public. Uh, we do dog show tours for the Minneapolis Kennel Club, which is a lot of fun. And I'm also an active member of the Bernese Mountain Dog Club of America and have been for about twenty years now. Um, since then, in terms of professional capacity, um, I've served on the Board of Directors for an organization called Mini Analytics. It's a nonprofit organization that's devoted to the professional education of people in the analytics discipline. It's focused in the Twin Cities. I served from about the period of twenty, oh, I volunteered from twenty-ten to twenty-twelve um, or so, and served on the Board of Directors for about two or three years. Um, so that was enjoyable. Um, we hosted about six different conferences here that would range in size from about five hundred people to twenty-five hundred people. And we would recruit, um, fundraising dollars as well. So the idea is that we can have these conferences without, uh, them costing anything for our community. Um, so we'd recruit probably hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, in fundraising money. As part of that, I started a scholarship foundation alongside a couple of my other board members. We had a lot of extra money in our coffers. And so I used it to, um, get young people interested in analytics and help sponsor them, uh, through their college educations. I think that's the extent of my governing experience. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You got a question?
Yeah, please.
You had said, um, two to three years as a Board of Director member. How long ago was it? I missed that part.
I'd have to go back and look at my resume. Um, it's on my resume, if you want to check it out on LinkedIn, I can send you a link and I'd be happy to do that, um, so that I can get exact dates, but I was, I was serving on the board for about two to three years, so I started around twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve and served until about twenty-fifteen.
Okay.
Maybe early twenty-sixteen.
Thank you.
Anything else for now? We may have, I'm sure we have more questions to go through here, so, but thank you. All right. Wendy?
Good evening and thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Wendy Phillips. I am new to the area, been living in OrnoCo for less than a year, come from Southern California. So it's quite a change, but I am absolutely loving it here. Uh, my experience as part of leadership and governing boards, I was the worship leader in a Southern Baptist church in Southern California for eight years. And I served on the elder board of that church. It started out as First Baptist Church of New Hall when I began. And through the process of the eight years, the leadership team that I was part of rewrote our bylaws and changed our name, and so we went through an entire process with that. It involved collaboration, vision casting. It involved sharing and communicating our vision with such clarity that we were able to get buy-in from the majority of the congregation, so we were actually able to create the changes that were going to benefit that church moving forward. Um, I also served in leadership for missions. We did, uh, a mission to Pearlington, Mississippi, the year after Katrina, and we rebuilt houses there. That was all about creating teams, figuring out the logistics of where we were going to be working, all the materials we needed, who was qualified to do what type of function. And then I served in international missions as a leader also. Um, as a worship leader, I went to the country of Romania in June of two thousand and eight. And I worked in collaboration with a pastor that had been there for fourteen years straight. And my role that year was to go as the worship leader for an evangelical rock tour of the country. What they were doing was they were evangelizing, and they were serving different communities. Each community they went to had a slightly different need, but they found ways that those communities' needs were lining up. And so they chose a function aside from the evangelical part, and that was serving to, um, do group activities and lots of fun things for kids. It was a very poor, um, area of the country that we went to. And so there was just a lot of pouring love and resources into children and evangelizing to adults and teenagers. And then the second international mission I did was in August of two thousand and nine. Uh, my husband and I went to, uh, a Baptist Bible College and seminary that was just outside of Bangalore in India. We went to a tiny little village called Saklawada. And we taught there for two weeks as visiting professors. And my part of that was teaching juniors and seniors in this Baptist Bible college the spiritual and practical aspects of being a worship leader. And that is my, my leadership experience, aside from business-type things, so, okay?
Can you give me a little, um, idea of, sorry, you can't tell.
I'm not, I'm not wearing the mask, I hear the voice, but where is it coming from?
With your business, with business leadership, where, what kind of, uh, can you give us some examples of your leadership in business?
Yes, I have worked in health clubs for most of my adult life. Um, pushing four decades now. And I was in management for health clubs and was in sales for health clubs and led teams in those areas.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Carl? Question number two?
You're up. We are.
Yeah.
You're gonna have three here tonight.
Yeah, someone else, the idea is to have someone else start number two and then Carl follow down, you know.
Well, then how about Lizzie?
Lizzie, would you want to start number two?
So number two is all about the activities that would contribute to my effectiveness in the role, correct?
Yes, we can read, it's better, let's read them so that the people on Zoom can hear us. I can read the question. Please tell us any activities, interests, specialized skills, knowledge, or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on the OrnoCo system. Well, I rolled in tonight and I had applesauce that had dried up all over my arm. And so the first thing that I think would make me particularly successful is the fact that I wrangle a two-year-old toddler fairly successfully in my day-to-day life. And I feel like if you can wrangle a toddler, you can do a lot, right? Um, on a day-to-day basis, um, I'm a VP of Research for an industry, or research and advisory company that is based out of the East Coast. Um, in my role on a day-to-day basis, one of my jobs is to make sure that people connect with other people. And, uh, that can be fairly political in a large international organization. Um, so, uh, that's certainly one of the things I enjoy doing, um, trying to figure out how we can connect disparate groups of people, um, in, in the organization that might have neighboring interests or complementary skills. Um, and, and that's certainly one component of what I enjoy and what I'm successful at. In addition to that, uh, I manage a product within the organization. I'm in charge of managing, um, two or three of my peers on a regular basis and their contributions to what we call our research agenda. Our research agenda, um, you know, evolves from year to year. It depends on what our clients' needs are, what their interests are. And in that role, I have to balance, um, then, you know, what our clients might need with what, uh, people actually want to contribute, you know? And so it's, um, sort of like going to a potluck, you know? Everybody wants to make brownies, and you don't want to end up with an entire dinner of brownies. Um, so that's the same thing in my role. Uh, I have to make sure that we have the brownies, but I also have to make sure that we end up with the burgers and with the, the potato chips and with the dips that everybody loves. Um, and so it's really about trying to commission those contributions from people and identify what that is. Uh, so part of it is sensing the needs of our clients. The other part of it is, um, getting people excited about contributing regardless of whether it's something that they want or something that our, um, our clients' needs, our clients' need, yeah, we have to align with them. Um, I think that about sums up the, a couple of the areas I'm particularly interested in, connecting, um, commissioning, getting stuff done. At the end of the day, I'm responsible to make sure that our clients have what they need and that our business stays profitable based on the product that we create. Um, but I'm happy to answer questions.
So I have one question regarding your, um, skills and with your working with two or three peers, but do you deal directly with the public uh, as opposed to your specified clients?
Yes, I do. Um, I work regularly with, uh, Fortune fifty, uh, chief marketing officers and advise them on their marketing strategy and plans. Um, in addition to that, I speak at conferences every year. Um, so I've spoken in front of five to eight hundred people at a time. Um, so it's a one-to-many kind of situation. And I also do one-on-one meetings with them. Um, in thirty minutes, they sit down in front of me and they say, this is my problem, I need your help solving it. And by the end of that thirty minutes, you've had to diagnose what their issue is. Um, we've had to, had to figure out if that's in fact what their problem is, you know, have to think about it as a system. Um, and then, um, at the end of that thirty minutes, they have to feel like they've got the tools that they need in order to accomplish their goals.
Is this specific to any industry or, um, sports, marketing, education, the whole gambit, or?
It is, um, I have been, uh, at my current role for about five years. Before I was in that role, I spent ten years building analytics capabilities for marketing and advertising agencies. Um, it's specific to marketing, and that's where I focus in on marketing data and analytics, as well as marketing technology, advertising technology. Um, and then, where is my brain gonna go? Uh, you asked about industries. Um, it covers all industries, so it is not specific to one particular vertical.
Yeah, um, so you know, you kind of talked about sensing the needs of your clients and, you know, in this role, um, I tend to think of the public as our client and, um, you know, city of OrnoCo is who we work for and the decisions that we make um, affect a lot of different people with a lot of different interests. Um, how do you see yourself making sure that, you know, I think you could take your skills and, um, you know, kind of process things down? How do you, how do you see yourself taking that into a public role where you don't necessarily have one specific company telling you, this is what I want, um, where you probably have a lot of different voices? Um, where, where do you see that coming? Where do you see that coming from?
Yeah, I think there's two analogies I would make to my current role. One is to look at, we look at kind of marketing maturity. So what's good for one client isn't, who's maybe earlier on in their stage of maturity, isn't necessarily good for the best-in-class marketer, right? And in a similar way, you know, it's not necessarily that our citizens and, you know, the community is at a different stage of maturity. But I think the analogy I'm trying to make is that what people's needs are very much depends on, you know, where they're coming from. You know, what kind of a background do they have? What are their contributions? How do they exist in the community? And trying to do some level of, you know, demand sensing in that way to talk to people, ask them about that, and then look at what issues arise. And that gets into the next piece that I would allude to, which is segmentation. And effective marketers know how to segment their audience, right? You've got one audience that has those, some needs, the other audience is slightly different. And I think that's a similar thing to looking at our community. At the end of the day, no two people are alike. And, but trying to group them according to what their needs are, what they share in common, can help us understand a bit more about who they are, which will then inform how we can better address their needs and also make it more manageable for us, right? If we can surface five groups rather than 1,300 individuals, that makes us that much more effective as a governing body.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Question number two?
Want me to read it to you, Carl, or do you have it?
No, you can read it for Zoom or whatever. Yeah, I'm, no.
I'll remind people what the question is. Please tell us about any activities, interests, specialized skills, knowledge, or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on the Orinoco City Council?
Well, I've had much interest in the government for all my life. I'm a 47-year business owner. I had many ups and downs throughout the years. Then I was with my brother in the salvage business. Until 2000, 2000, I became very ill with a brain aneurysm for a year. I came back and started my own business, CJ Auto Sales. And I knew the highway was going to take the interchange out up there. And I was two years without a road to get to my business, which is a very hard struggle to make it work, to make it survive. And I'm also very conservative. I, you know, I want to make sure money's spent wisely. And I like helping people. I mean, I have many walks of lives come through my front door at work, which I don't, I retired now from work. But, and we've did buy here, pay here for cars, which says you sell somebody a car and you trust them to pay. And everybody says, how do you do it? I said, I look somebody in the eye and I figure if I can trust them or if I can't, because there's no sense in looking up their credit rating because you know that one came to our place where buy here, pay here car. So we work with very, you know, I'm not prejudiced at all. You know, we got all kinds, lots of lives coming through our door. And I would appreciate serving on the city council again. Thank you. Any questions?
How long have you been retired?
How long have I been retired? Since, where is it? Since January 1st of this year. I guess it on.
Sorry, I remember, it's been so long.
Yeah. Well, I kind of been retired for about four years, but legally, it's all open now. Thank you. Any other question?
Carl?
Nope, Wendy hasn't answered this question. I know it's confusing. All right, I'll read it one more time, Wendy.
All righty.
Please tell us about any activities, interests, specialized skills, knowledge, or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on the Orinoco City Council?
Yeah. Well, going back to being a worship leader, one of the things that I learned when I was part of this leadership team at the church was what it meant to be an effective leader actually circled back to being a selfless servant. Servant leadership is definitely where the most effective leaders are coming from. And being in that position was a definite challenge. When I started that position, I had been in bands for many, many years. And I had to laugh when you were talking about wrangling your toddler. I, my daughter is 35 years old, so I'm really far removed from that. But when you're working with musicians or fitness instructors, it's a whole lot like what I call herding cats. So I could totally relate to that whole thing. But when I began this position at the church, I was invited in as a change agent. It was a very traditional church that had choir and organ. And what they wanted to do was they wanted to bring younger families into the church. And I was a rock musician, that was my background. So I was hired to create a rock format in this traditional church. And I had no idea what I was in for and the resistance I was going to come up against. But what I found was that through being my authentic self, allowing people to get to know me and who I am and what my heart is for them, that created a bridge that, that the music thing couldn't build because all they could see was this person that was coming in. And creating change that, when you've got a population of 70 and 80 and 90-year-olds who like what they've had in the way of their worship, and you're bringing something that is completely outrageous to them, I wasn't going to win them over with my music. And so what I did was I loved them while they continued to criticize me, decide that I was the reason people were leaving the church. And I heard so much of that. And at the end of eight years, when it was finally time for me to resign from that position, I was told at that point that change agents generally last a year to 18 months because it's so brutal. And so I realized that I really did have a servant's heart because I wasn't there because it felt good to me. I was there because I had a vision of what my part of the change was that was going to grow and keep that church as a viable part of that community. And so I was able to sacrifice my agenda and my comfort for the overall well-being of the church. That was one of the things that was, was really stands out in my mind for that. Another thing, and this kind of communicates across the different things that I've done, recognizing whether people are open to what it is that you're doing, what it is that you're saying, what it is that you desire to invite them into. Being able to read a room is a huge part of, of getting people to that point of buy-in. You know, just because what it is that we would, that we would invite people into, we could know in our heart of hearts that is absolutely the best thing for everyone that's involved. But if we don't have buy-in because they can't, they can't see the vision, then we're not going to win that battle. And so as a worship leader, as a fitness instructor, I'm also a life coach in a very specialized type of coaching. That communication is really key in all of the things that I've done. I believe that I'm a strong communicator, that I use precision in the words that I choose to convey a message, and that I am a connector. I desire to connect hearts with other people so that they can feel me as well as hear me. I believe it's also an art to be able to listen. I could be the greatest speaker in the world, but if I don't have the skill set that goes, you know, along with that, that is just the beautiful marriage of being a great listener, then all of my speaking skills are for naught. And so especially through this life coaching process that I am certified and licensed in, it taught me not only to listen to what people are saying, but to what they're not saying. And, and if I can hear all of those things, then I can ask really great questions. And through those questions, invite people into my processes. And the one thing that I've learned through all the years of all the different things that I've done with people, and I've always been in some sort of service industry or servant role, the thing that I have learned is that I'm an influential person. I can, I can create an argument that is very sound. But it is far more powerful to ask questions of somebody and to lead them through powerful questions to a point that they're able to draw their own conclusion that is in closer alignment to what it is that I desire to communicate. If they experience that as a discovery on their own, it is going to be much more powerful than something that I have convinced them of. And so these are skills that I absolutely would be bringing with me into this position. Something else I'm very big on is creating agreements with people. And the agreements are that I, whatever I tell you, I will do. I will do it, and I will stick to that. And I'll ask you to make agreements with me. And I will hold you to those agreements. And if we've made agreements with each other and we have some sort of dispute or we're at an impasse and we can look back on our agreements, it is going to keep us in communication with each other. That is a great tool to have in your tool chest. So, thank you.
I think we should go to Wendy, actually, because she has gone last in all of them.
The question number three is a lengthy one for the Zoom people following and the people in the audience. It's specifically about time, the time requirement. So city council meets monthly on the third Tuesday at 6:30 PM. A council member who fills this vacancy will be asked to join the planning and zoning committee, which I don't know if we know for sure yet, but we're, basically, you need to join a committee. That's the vacant one, I believe, at the moment. That meets the second Thursday of the month at 7:00. And the council member who fills this vacancy will also be asked to join the Gold Rush Committee, which meets the second Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM, and must, absolutely must be available to help the third weekend, Friday and Sunday, Friday through Sunday of August each year for the Gold Rush event that you're in, that you're in office. So basically, the question is, will your schedule permit you to attend regular meetings and the Gold Rush event? And do you envision any issues that would prevent you from those duties?
And before, before anyone answers, this is the minimum, right?
This is the minimum.
That's in the, that's in the servant leader handbook, right? This is the minimum.
Yes, true.
So I create my own schedule, so I absolutely have the flexibility to weave and bend whatever, you know, with whatever it is that is required of me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For question number three, yeah, I'd have no trouble attending any of the meetings. As I said earlier, I fully retired January 1st of this year. I would have no problem helping with the Gold Rush weekend. I would have no problems fulfilling all these requirements. You can look at the back page there. So when I'm retired, I got way too much time on my hands now.
So just want to bring up a point about Gold Rush and Carl's involvement. Back in 2016 or 2017, Carl was not, for reasons that the board, Gold Rush Board, chose Carl to resign from the Gold Rush Committee for a particular action that him and another president didn't feel like it met the bylaws of the Gold Rush Charter when that was happening.
Could I interrupt you just a second? I will say, me, my wife, and anybody I ask, never seen bylaws from Gold Rush. If I would have seen bylaws from Gold Rush, would have been a different outcome. I got served gold, the bylaws on the Monday night when I got railroaded by Bo and Trish out of here. I had no chance. It says in the bylaws, let's not get into this. This has got nothing to do with me joining the council. I said I got plenty of time, I will serve. I love Gold Rush. If I didn't love Gold Rush, I was here from day one. I've served, I helped when the foxes were going to steal it from the, well, I shouldn't say steal it from the city, but they were going to take it to Rochester. My sister-in-law and my brother sat in court and fought for it. They had no idea how to lay it out. Me and Dennis, no, both had food stamps. Jim McCurn sold ice cream sandwiches up here. He sold it, deal now. But he helped us plot maps and everything. I loved Gold Rush. You know, I want people, but we got to realize, we want, the people that come to town are doing us a favor. We want to welcome them into town. We don't want to dictate to them. We want to make them feel comfortable when they come. But I have no problem fulfilling my duty. And believe me, I work 100% for the City of Orinoco to save Gold Rush. Because I mean, we got a lot of hard years coming ahead of us in Gold Rush because antiques have kind of fizzled. Now it's re-promotion or whatever they do with old stuff. And, you know.
It's not, it's a Gold Rush Committee decision. If, if you were to be acceptable, it's not a council issue, but it is a Gold Rush issue, but it's separate from the council, but that's in question.
Okay, then why would the question put on this piece of paper, Ryland? If you're saying it's up to Gold Rush.
I'll tell you why. Because when Jim, when Jim ran for office, he didn't realize he would have to be on the Gold Rush Committee.
And I have no.
And so, just a second. So he, and he's unable to be there that weekend. So if he's unable to be there that weekend and Gold Rush wouldn't reinstate you, that would leave three people doing all that work. And that's just not, you know how much work it is. That's not possible.
Let me just clear it up.
Right.
Because I will be there. Because I've talked with my wife.
Oh.
I will be there. So don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
But I think honestly, in fairness, Ryland, to bring this up, I think there's two sides to every story. And I don't know if we want to know that story here. Is it, is it going to make a difference here?
In my vote, I haven't heard any of this, and I served with you for two years. And so a quick, hey FYI, this is what happened and this is why. And that you are willing and able, because I always thought you just couldn't go or didn't want to be on. I really didn't know. So that, it is important if I, you know, clear the air and understand what the situation is. And, you know, obviously, we're serving.
I really need to talk about it because one of the people are going to vote for me on council or ain't going to vote for me on council. Is John, or I guess another person, had a meeting because, I mean, there was a lot of people wrapped up on, you know, having to pay extra money and stuff and how it was going. They felt they were coming into a town of a dictatorship. I mean, and that was kind of. I mean, and that was kind of, at other shows and everything, and they were fighting over land and stuff. And then I came here, all the vendors came and listened on a Sunday morning. And I had no idea that it was planned. I was at the stock car races on Saturday night down to Deer Creek. Came here and I stuck up for this gentleman. On Monday, not knowing nothing, I came to the meeting, never getting a copy of the bylaws. My ex-wife or, I mean, it's my wife or whatever, was on Gold, or was a council person, was on Gold Rush. Never got a copy, no bylaws. I talked to many of people what's about, I just never got copies of bylaws. So I walked in here, we came to a Gold Rush meeting on Monday night. It says in the bylaws, you're supposed to have a hearing, you know, to hear it out. But no, Bo and Trish had it all set up, that I had to bring my four shirts back and this and that, and I was kicked off Gold Rush. That was the end of it. So that wasn't.
So you didn't know anything?
Huh?
I'm still not clear what it was, but what I'm hearing, you didn't know anything about it prior.
No, I didn't know Gold Rush even had bylaws. My wife didn't. You know, I mean, I guess you can ask other people. I mean, I guess I, I love Gold Rush, as you can see, I wrote what I think of Gold Rush. I, I wanted to, it's a good, good deal for the city of Oronoco. And we got to work with people coming, make them feel welcome. And that's what I felt at the time. It's got better over the years, the last few years. And if I went to council, I mean, I love the town. Or I wouldn't have been here. Well, I lived out Oronoco probably five, 10 years of my life. And when I leave, I'm just going up here on the hill. I hope my spirits go higher, but, but I'm going to be looking down on Oronoco. Any other place. But honestly, Ryland, if there was anything in Gold Rush, I would be fully.
I will share that with the committee.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate if I did get a point to get back on, you know.
Just take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to marry the dates again? No. Yeah, I can say at this point I'd be prepared to serve. It's challenging to know what the life is going, what life is going to look like after the pandemic. Normally I travel 20%, about one week a month with less travel in the summers. But thank goodness for Zoom because I think that that gives us the ability to connect even if we can't connect face to face. And I would be more than happy to make plans and figure out ways to make things work.
Yeah, it's leading up, and this is for Wendy's and Carl's aware of already, but there are several weekends prior to that that we do some flagging and getting the lots ready and things like that. Typically it's that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, but the show is Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
Vendors come in Thursday to set up, so it's really a four day.
Yeah, you can tell under my mask, but I'm smiling because my.
Yeah, we're all smiling, so.
My spouse gives me a hard time when Gold Rush comes to town. I grew up with, my grandparents were gypsy antique dealers. And so it runs in the family and so I'm down here on my bike and browsing around. Who never knows what I'm going to bring home. My husband was happy when I became a Gold Rush Committee member and then on council because I don't have time to shop now. He's not unhappy about that. I think vendors are unhappy because I give them. Yep.
Thank you, Lizzy.
You're welcome.
Last question.
Wendy has an answer or does she have an answer? She answered. Besides the upcoming sewer and water project, what do you believe is the single most compelling issue facing the city of Oronoco?
I believe Oronoco needs to continue working on commercial interests and encourage development to promote commercial land. When the water and sewer project is complete, I'd like to see some townhomes being built for the citizens that would like to continue to call Oronoco home. Then it's important to keep up to date and information what the outrun plans are and what will be the impact that these plans may have on Oronoco. Because I think it's very, very important, you know, outrun or Indian territories, we can throw rocks at it. They're only half mile away. So I think it's very important what they're going to expect from Oronoco or what we're going to get from them. And it seems like they're really very quiet right now what the development plans are. I know. Have you had any communications, Ryland, at all?
No, I don't think we'll really hear anything until the federal legislature gives them the sovereign status. And that's the reason there is no discussion or, I'm not aware of any plans. That's mainly the reason, so.
By the way, I understand, and I don't know, Adam lives in the back door. He can throw rocks over on the plan. But I, a plant kind of, the plant I've heard is they're going to build houses on this close to Oronoco right away.
That's right. It's my, for residential residents that want to get back on the reservation. This is another opportunity because there's no space at the current location, so.
And, you know, it's kind of important so we know what's happening what if we start to work at some development up on this side of the hill or up on the highway 12 or, you know.
Yeah, it's a, sovereign status is the main thing and, and because you are part of the.
How many years ago was that, man? Must be three, four years. It's been three, four years now?
Probably the second year or third year, but it could be several years before they get.
They got five, the government's got to give it to them within five years. Right or wrong, but we know they're going to give it to them because they paid for the land. All righty, thank you.
Wendy?
So Wendy, besides the upcoming sewer and water project, what do you believe is the single most compelling issue facing the city of Oronoco?
Well, as in every other part of our nation right now, I believe that the preservation of civil liberties of our citizens that we represent. I, I believe that it is the responsibility of any governing body, whether it's at the city level, state level, federal level, is to stay within our lane lines as servant leaders. And it's through that lens that I believe we will be measured in regard to our relevance and our efficacy as leaders. And so having a city council that is truly servant leader oriented, that would look like a group of people that are willing to sacrifice our own opinions, our own judgments, our own agendas in support of what the people we represent are telling us that they want. And I understand that we cannot please 100% of the people 100% of the time. But I think it's important to understand what the majority of people are really looking for from the leadership in their city. And to listen very carefully to what it is that they're saying to us. And then to represent that in a fair and, and honest manner.
There's a, just one comment to your comments, response to that. As city council members, we have to adhere to open meeting laws and serial meeting laws. So the idea of, and we can't have serial discussions from me to Jim, Jim to Dana. That constitutes a serious, so we all need to come to our council meetings on independent minds and no collaboration with other, discussion, maybe possibility of violating open meeting laws. So that's very important to carry that independent thinking to the council meetings.
Absolutely. And I, I believe that all of those, you know, guidelines are set in place to protect the integrity of the whole process. And so I'm in full agreement with all of that. Okay?
Okay, one more time, I'll read it. Besides the upcoming sewer and water project, what do you believe is the single most compelling issue facing the city of Oronoco? Um, so I graduated from Wellesley College out in Wellesley, Massachusetts. And the college motto is known ministeri, said ministeri. That means not to be ministered unto, but to minister. And that's really given me a, like a sense of how I want to contribute to the world around me. When I was interested in getting active in politics, I reached out to one of my classmates and she works at the state level here in politics. And I said, you know, how can I make the biggest impact if I don't have all of the time in the world? And I'm not quite retired yet, you know, what can I do? And she told me that the best way to get started is to get started in one's community. And so that's really what I believe is one of our biggest opportunities. I want my family to be able to live in a community that we feel a sense of belonging in and that we feel a sense of pride in. And we feel, you know, we have an understanding of its long-term vision as well. When I was growing up, I actually grew up in a township on 10 acres of land. And so when we moved to Oronoco three years ago, that was probably one of the big motivators for how we ended up here. I grew up a 4H kid. And when it comes to looking at how this community in Oronoco is going to look for the next five, 10, 50 years, we're at this critical point where we can say, you know, with this water and sewer project, we're looking at modernizing our infrastructure. We have the opportunity to recruit business here. We have the opportunity to recruit new citizens here who maybe like my spouse and I didn't want to sit on postage stamp lots in Rochester. Not, there's anything along with that. I just grew up on, you know, 10 acres of a hobby farm in the country. And so as we look at how the choices that are presenting themselves to us, you know, we really have an opportunity to go to our citizens and say, you know, what do you think this is going to look like in 50 years? I'm assuming, or not, I shouldn't assume, but I, I would hope that there is an opportunity or it has been done, where we've done some kind of an audit or a study to look at what people are asking for, what people are interested in, what type of commercial development they want. And, and I think that that's probably the next step, you know, really looking at developing this 25-year plan, you know, in Oronoco 2040. In my, yeah, I'm excited about it. I mean, I think there's, you know, we're a cool little community. We've got this hip downtown. You know, there are opportunities for us to develop something like a Cannon Falls where people want to come here. They think of coming here for Gold Rush once a year. That's not enough. But if we can get people spending dollars here and people moving here so we can build our tax base, that's a really great opportunity for us as a city.
Super. Those are good comments. Back in 2016, 2017, we did a, we received a grant to do some of economic design ideas. University of Minnesota, we won a grant for like $1,500 to pull in these resources from Minnesota or from Minneapolis, from the University of Minnesota. So we have a, we have kind of a roadmap of what was asked of our residents and business owners that present that meeting. So I, I think that's something that no doubt the sewer project will lend itself to those type of re-engagement and, and going forward. So that's a very important point. And I think we all recognize the importance of the sewer project and how well it's going to make more, expand and improve and provide an alternative to Rochester's living.
Right. I agree. And there's probably, I mean, I mean, they could go on and on for a while. There's an opportunity to market it better, you know, can we attach a name to it? The Oronoco 2040 and get businesses excited, get people excited. Can we put some, some kind of a, like a research opportunity to understand what citizens want? If we, you know, and update some of that, maybe segment those citizens looking at new versus old or young versus older, you know, we get these guys the limit. I think it starts with not only that vision, but also that set of hypotheses. You know, what are we trying to understand? And that should guide the, kind of the next thing we do beyond finally getting our, our water figured out.
Okay. You have a comment? Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for making the time, y'all.
All right. While we, through their interviews, was there, Carl?
Maybe I have a thought just a second on question number three.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I've been sitting back here thinking, why did question number three get put on there? When you're sitting there and saying, you got to be on Gold Rush to be a councilperson and you're saying, you don't know if they'll let me back on. I think that's really prejudgmental affair. I mean, that hurts. That, I mean, that downright hurts because I can't become a council member if they won't let me back on Gold Rush. Well, I think I had 320 people vote for me. And I mean, I know I had an opinion. I kept my opinion. I know it cost me votes, but.
The questions were set prior to knowing who.
Okay, but I think it's a very hard question. Everybody ought to look at.
So you know, the questions were set prior to knowing anybody's name. They were discussed the night that we decided how we were going to do this. And because Trish was on Gold Rush and as you can see, she was on the planning and zoning committee, we need to fill those vacancies. And so that's why they were put on. So in all fairness, it, it, it wasn't because of you.
Oh, I realize it wasn't because of me, but Ryland set up here and say, I don't know if they'll let me back on Gold Rush if I'm appointed. Well, I can't be appointed, you know, if I can't fulfill it. And I gladly fulfilled. If you read the letter, you know, it was a bad deal what happened. And there was a, a lot of mix-up in Gold Rush for a couple of years. It's getting much, much better.
So the discussion the night that we had our special meeting, that didn't get into the minutes because it was a discussion and not everything got into the minutes, but we did say that night. You know, I said, I really appreciate it because at that time Jim couldn't be there. And so the only thing that.
Right, but I mean, if Ryland was going to bring it up tonight.
Well, it was a question.
Huh?
It was a question.
Right, but if he was going to bring up the past, you know.
It has, but I do think, like, I know it because I've been on the Gold Rush Committee long enough to know of your history with the Gold Rush Committee. But Jim doesn't and Lori doesn't. So for us to make an informed decision, we do have to know that, Carl. That's really important. And there, like you said, there is two sides to every story. So there is your side and you told it tonight.
So what are you saying here? Now it says here, the vacancy on the council and Ryland says, they might not let me on to council. So then I can't be a councilman.
I would say that goes into the decision. And, and to follow up with a question, the, the comment of the questions is that, you know, I could have, I could have spoken to Jim, I could have spoke with Lori and Dana and explained to them why it's not a good question. And like again, we didn't know for sure who is going to do it when he sent the questions out. But at the same time.
Well, you knew.
Basically, you know, I can't start talking to council members and not be a violation of meeting laws.
It all has to be out in the open. We have, we, the only way for us to talk about it is.
Okay. You knew I was going to apply because I was in Cal, or in Florida with my granddaughter and I called you, told you I wanted, I'd like to be back on city council. So I mean, this question bothers me. I understand where you're coming from and everything. But what I, what I'm saying, it's kind of, you know, and Ryland says if the, if the Gold Rush give me, well, I can't fulfill my duties. You understand?
I, I totally get what Carl's saying and what the council's saying. Yes, Rylan brought up what he did. And I know there's two sides to every story. I've not heard this story at all. Um, and it sounds like you didn't really get a say in it from what you're saying. I don't know the background, so I can't judge it. But I would think if Carl is the one we're seeing, every council member has to be on Gold Rush. So if Gold Rush wants to continue working with the city, right? And, and we're, we're all one, then I think Carl would get another chance.
And I know two years ago, Rylan wanted to put, give me back on, but he didn't, you know, get the vote or it just got dropped or whatever. So, yeah, or ask me to come back and I would, you know, I got in a bad deal with a bad guy and, you know, it's a bad deal. I just want to know, I just want you guys all to know, I love Gold Rush. Okay. I just wanted to clear up the air, so.
On the, um, so if we go back and look at, just kind of circle back around to the application. There was two questions on the application. Do you, I think we have. The two questions are on the applications. The first was what vision do you have for city growth and the water and sewer need of the city? And I think we've listened to those responses appropriately. The other question is what is the key issues that prompted your decision to seek this vacancy? And I think we've kind of covered that through all the questions and the responses. Would you agree with that or should we?
Well, and we have the written, we have the written responses for us to go back and look at. So I don't, I don't think it's necessary to have to revisit.
Okay, so I think we're, does anybody have any other questions that we haven't asked of the three residents?
Should we give everybody a last chance to say something?
Yeah, I think so. It's kind of a summary comment, if you'd like to speak. Asked a lot of you to share all your thoughts in those five questions, but if there's anything else that you'd like to share with us that wasn't on the question, please feel free to come up and point.
You guys, you know, I'm just asking for your thoughts, giving me a chance to be on the council. I was on the council four years ago. I would love to join you and help with the growth of the town and, uh, the key issues coming up. And there's many issues coming up with the water and sewer. We've been working on it the last six years and, uh, we got water. We have much water, more water hooking up. And, uh, the sewer project's gonna be a big project. And unfortunately, we lost our nice, very good maintenance man to another city. So as I understand, you guys are out looking for a maintenance man to fulfill it. And hopefully we can find one that keep right up to speed. So we don't go back to zero and start, you know? Because it's gonna be a big task. It's a big task running down water towers into wells and stuff. It's kind of like a seven-day-a-week job. Because if he ain't doing it, Jimmy's gotta be out there checking them and make sure they gotta check water qualities. And the sewer plant is gonna be out by Orinoco State. So I mean, I don't see no other way than to add some more people on. I talked to Dan since he's been up the cannon phone. And like we, I think he said, it's either we got 24 and they got 28 mile of streets or vice versa. And they got five maintenance men, men plus him. So I mean, it's a pretty big task, a lot of stuff to do. And we're asking a real small crew to do it. And just hopefully we find, Dan was so friendly, so good to everybody. I guess forward, hopefully we can find a good replacement. And then Geraldine, can't say enough about Geraldine, all the work she's doing in City Hall. On, unfortunately, she's got a loved one, very good, but moving out her the family. And she done, and she's had a big operation coming and everything. So I sure hope you guys will all give her a hand and, uh, give her the time and space away because I know how tough it was when my loved one left. So, thank you.
I, I do have one more question for each of you. And, and I know, you know, we're, we're sitting here in 2021. This term will only be a two-year term. So I guess my question in, as each of you come up, if you could just answer, would you, if you were elected or if you're not elected, be prepared to run in the next election?
Oh, definitely, definitely. Unless they get some.
Thank you.
You know, but yeah, yeah, no, I, I want to sit watch. I don't know if I'm growing, if I can have a hand and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Lizzie, any comments?
Yeah, I can do that. Would be looked to serve again. Um, I always joke that I can barely figure out if I put on clean pants in the morning, so. I'm, I'm still playing it day by day. But, you know, I think that there's a lot that I have to learn. Um, and I would certainly look at this as a learning opportunity. And if I did serve effectively, I would certainly look at doing it again. Um, you know, there is something to say about institutional knowledge and not having to retrain that same person over and over again. I'm looking at getting into a new role at work. And, um, you know, in that first year that you're on it, in, you, you aren't super productive. So I totally understand the desire to have continuity on the council. The closing statement, I suppose. I'm excited about the future of Orinoco. I think that there's a lot of work left to be done in terms of figuring out what that's gonna look like and putting a plan together and making that plan known. But I would really look forward to being a part of that and figuring out how we can be part of the, the growth and the growth from Rochester and, and the growth of Orinoco. Thank you for making the time today and I certainly appreciate it. And thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
Before I answer your final question, I have to know what is the term?
So it's a two-year, this is a two-year term.
Right, it's till December of 2022?
Yep, and then the next term would be a four-year term. So it's, you know, it's, I guess, just something that's been on my mind that, um, any, it, you could say tonight, no way, I don't want to do it, which would be a totally fine answer. And two years from now, you may have your name on a ballot. I, you know, just a, off the cuff answer of where your heart feels like it is today.
Well, I know that in the 10 months that I've lived here, I've absolutely fallen in love with the city of Orinoco and with the area. In all honesty, life is pretty unpredictable. So I don't know where I'm going to be six years from now. But I know that if I were in the area, which I anticipate being, that I would absolutely be willing to serve another four years. So if that answers that question sufficiently, I'll move on. Just in conclusion, one of the things that I believe I could bring to the council would be a fresh set of eyes. I haven't been here for very long. And so I know that the longer I spend in one place, the less I see the things that are around me because I'm so immersed in, in all of it. And when I walk in to this type of setting, everything I see is brand new. And so I may notice things that would not be noticed by somebody that has been in for a long time. And that's not to say that you guys aren't paying attention. That's not at all what I mean. All I'm saying is that when I walk into a place that I've never been before, I look at it with a curiosity and a fascination that I don't have after I've been there for several years. That's my personality. Some other things about my personality is that, and this was in my original application, I am a visionary with an analytical mind and an even temper. I am authentic. What you see is what you get with me. I am a strong communicator, a good listener. I'm a respecter of peoples. And I really believe in making and honoring agreements with others. I desire with all my heart to influence with integrity. And one of the things that kind of wraps up all of that in me is something that a mentor of mine taught me about 10 years ago. And it is this saying, I will only ask another to do what I myself have been willing to do. So I can sit back and I can have opinions about everything that is going on in my city, state, country. But if I'm not willing to get out there and give up myself to try to make a difference, then I am not in personal integrity with myself. And so I'm stepping up and I'm putting myself out there, offering whatever gives towns time I have, all my energy. So thank you so much for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I think that concludes our interview session. I would like to say that we will, this is on our agenda for tomorrow evening to, uh, speak or to decide and appoint. We have a public forum tomorrow evening at the beginning of our council meeting. I would encourage support, people who'd like to speak, that would be the place to do it as our public forum. Our meeting starts at 6:30 and a few minutes after that. First thing to do is have a public forum, so. If you're gonna be allowed three minutes. If you have a lot of people, limit that to like 90 seconds, something like that, to, to share your support. So we don't get too, we'd like to hear all of them, but we really need to watch our time as well. At the same time, we have some good candidates and the ones that are not tipped by the council. I would encourage your, and invite you to get involved with the city, whether it's a committee that has openings. I think that's an excellent place to, to learn more about the city as well. So between tonight and our meeting at 6:30 tomorrow night, I would encourage the members, council members, to review your notes. Come with an independent mind tomorrow and we'll discuss on the agenda when we get to that point, so. Because of the comments I wanted to make, anybody else have any comments? Otherwise, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you again for coming and support too.
It was unclear to me if our referees, if, sorry, it was unclear to me if it's required that you meet us here tomorrow or if it's just, uh, people in support of us.
That's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Have the time, and I know we took an hour and a half of your time tonight, but, um, you're more than welcome to join us or family or whatever, so.
All right, thank you.
If you have any support people that we have received, some emails in support, I would encourage supporters to send an email to city@orinococity@gmail.com and we'll put those in the packet for tomorrow night as well. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn. Jim, is there a second? Any comments? All right, all in favor, say if everybody's saying aye. Aye, aye. Approved at 7:52. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.